Further and indicate what we think is a way through.
Yes.
So the first thing is, um, according to the Industrial Relations Commission's guide to conciliations, it stated that conciliations are conducted in private and parties are expected to keep the matters discussed in the conciliation confidential. What that means is absent, um, putting to one side any statutory regime, it would appear to be the subject of negotiation privilege. And this commission doesn't have power to intrude upon privilege. But the way through seems clear enough as I understand it, what is sought to be elicited is the outcome of the conciliation and then questions about the implementation of the outcome of the, and so if the questions are confined to number one, what was agreed, that, as the outcome, there was a party to the agreement to the outcome and then questions about the implementation of that agreement, we have, the, the, the concern I raised before lunch doesn't arise.
That's how I intended to proceed.
Great, thank you. I'm grateful, Mr. Emmett. Thank you.
Now, just before lunch, you gave evidence about who was in attendance at this mediation or conciliation. And I took you to the email to the commissioner sent by Mr. Paps, which complained about some matters that the union considered were agreed had not been implemented. You recall that?
Yes.
Would you please bring up document INQ dot zero four seven dot zero zero one dot zero zero three five? Yes, please. This is a letter from the union to Mr. Breton, acting CEO, the 29th of May. You appear to be the contact person, correct?
Yes.
And then if you look at the content of the letter, it refers to the 24th of May being at the Industrial Relations Commission negotiating a way forward. And then the second paragraph, council made commitments that included removing social media posts against our members and issuing a statement in support of our members. Only a portion of the posts were removed and no statement was released by 11 o'clock on the 29th of May. And then the union was advised, advised by the chief people officer that no statement would be forthcoming. Then there's a further issue about the various posts and the partial removal of the posts. And then the union, however, met all our commitments. This is extremely disappointing. Further proves the contempt with which the mayor views our members and your staff. And then there's in a reference to the union invokes the grievance process. Where it's written that the union invokes the grievance process, what does that mean?
That's a reference to the grievance clause in the local government state award. Where we have to or our members need to advise their employer that there is actually a grievance. And then the conditions of that clause come into place, including that the union or the Industrial Relations Commission can intervene at any time.
Now, there was a response from Mr. Breton. And if document INQ dot zero forty seven dot zero zero one dot zero 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 three can be brought up? Yes, please. Now, this is a letter from the coun, the council, Mr. Breton. It's dated the 2nd of July, 2024. If you look at the content of the letter, it refers to that letter of the 29th of May that I've just taken you to. And the council acknowledges the disappointment expressed by the USU. Then there's a reference to the removal and non-removal of social media posts have been discussed at length. Parties are aware that an arbitration held on the 30th of May was conducted partly on the basis that the social media posts were unlikely to be removed. And so Mr. Breton then expresses his view that ventilating the issue further would be futile. And then he notes, it is important to note that I have limited control over the actions taken by the mayor and the opportunities to resolve the issue have been exhausted.
Yes.
And in respect of this particular issue of the posts and some kind of public statement by the mayor, was, was that debated or resolved further? Or as Mr. Breton suggests, you've kind of exhausted the ability to resolve the matter between the union and the council?
The matter was back in front of Commissioner Sloan on the morning of the 30th for conciliation. And Commissioner Sloan advised us we'll be moving straight into arbitration that day. And as a result of that, some of the safety related work bans that my members had put in place were lifted, some were not. And what Mr. Breton is referring to is that, however, within a few days of this, the social media posts had been removed, to my knowledge. And an apology or a statement was never forthcoming at all.
The statement or apology never forthcoming?
No.
But is it your recollection that the social media posts were removed?
Yes.
Before turning to another aspect of this, I just wanted to ask you generally some questions about Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
After the rally on the 24th of April and the pork on the fork part that we've seen, was Mr. Rhodes' employment, was he put on leave or suspended or anything like that?
He was suspended with pay the Monday following the rally. I think that's the 28th or 29th, the 28th of May, sorry, 28th of April. And an investigation was then conducted. And at the end of the investigation, he was issued with a show cause letter and then his employment was terminated.
All right. Can I just take that through steps? His employment was suspended pending an investigation?
Yes.
Did Mr. Rhodes apologize?
He had apologized in writing before he was suspended.
To whom did he apologize?
He emailed it to the acting CEO and had asked that it been passed on to the mayor. And Mr. Breton later did confirm it had been passed on to the mayor.
If some kind of fact finding investigation was undertaken?
Yes.
And was that undertaken by an outside organisation, I think called Continuum, something like that? To your knowledge, was an interim report prepared?
Potentially. I am not aware of what report council got back.
All right. You as the union organisations were not provided with that?
No.
And to your knowledge, nobody within the union was provided with that?
Not at that time, not at that.
And then a show cause letter was issued to Mr. Rhodes? That was issued by Mr. Breton?
Yes.
And is the purpose of the show cause, I'm now considering whether to terminate your employment, do you have anything else to submit to me?
Yes.
And Mr. Rhodes was given an opportunity to your knowledge for further submissions?
Yes.
And was his employment terminated?
Yes.
After his employment was terminated, were any proceedings brought on his behalf by the union?
Yes, we lodged an unfair dismissal.
And that was lodged with the State Commission?
Yes.
Did that lead to an arbitration or a hearing of the unfair dismissal claim being set down for a, for a particular date?
Yes.
And on the doors of the hearing room or the arbitration room, was there a settlement of that dispute?
Yes.
And as part of that settlement, was Mr. Rhodes re-employed by the council?
Yes, he was.
Another part of repercussions or developments from the interview with Chris O'Keefe and the postings. To your knowledge, did the union notify Safe Work of concerns?
Yes, we did.
Will document INQ dot zero four seven dot zero zero one dot zero 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 six be brought up? Yes, please. Now, that's a letter dated the 30th of April, 2024, to Safe Work New South Wales. And if you could move down the document, there's a reference to the interview with Mr. O'Keefe. And then since that prominent media appearance, we had reports from our members working at the council, they felt unsafe. And then there was a reference to one alleged instance of a council employee being verbally assaulted by a member of the public. You outlined before the three instances of members being concerned about their safety?
Yes.
Which one, was that?
This is the first one for the gentleman in the park.
Now, the next paragraph, what is particularly concerning is that Liverpool City Council were the recent recipients of a fine from Safe Work in relation to matters surrounding their failure to appropriately handle and manage psychosocial hazards. Do you know what that's referring to?
Yes.
What, what was it referring to?
So an ex-employee had made a complaint around how council dealt with bullying complaints. And as part of the outcome, the findings from Safe Work had to be displayed on notice boards at council. And that's where our members saw them, in particular on the notice board in the Rose Street depot, and it indicated that council had received a fine on that display.
All right. So your understanding is an ex-employee made a complaint directly to Safe Work?
Yes.
And as part of the resolution, there was a requirement that information about the complaint and how Safe Work dealt with it be put on a notice board at the depot?
Yeah, I don't know if that was part of the resolution, but I know that that is what happened. The outcome was put on the notice board.
Right. Did the union have any role in this employee making the complaint?
No.
So your knowledge of it was through the posting of whatever this document was on the notice?
Yes.
All right. Would document INQ dot zero four seven dot zero zero one dot zero zero seventy one be brought up? Yes, please. This is a press release that the union issued on about the 30th of April.
Yes.
And there's again a reference to the interview with Chris O'Keefe.
Yes.
And then again, INQ dot zero four seven dot zero zero one dot zero zero six two. I briefly showed you this earlier in the day. This is the union and it's described as a member update?
Yes.
And I think I was under the impression that it had been prepared and distributed at an earlier time than one of the answers to my questions from you indicated.
Yes.
And in particular, you picked up on the reference to the acting CEO?
Yes.
And of course, a reference to the acting CEO would be a reference to Mr. Breton?
Yes.
And would have to be some communication from him after the council meeting of the 24th?
Yes.
Of April, because that's when he was appointed.
Yes.
Acting. All right. Now, and if you want to have a, a look at the whole of this document, just to... So underneath the facts, you've got the, the union was advised of 150 jobs being under threat. Then there's a reference to the document provided to Ray Hadley, which had referred to two directors, four managers and an undisclosed number of non-core staff. Then there's a reference to information that in various discussions, Ned Manoon has talked about outsourcing the parks and cleaning areas. And then the mayor has repeatedly said council is committed to increasing frontline staff. This particular member update that was issued, what, did something prompt that or is this part of your regular updating or communication with your members?
When there's a situation where emotions are running high and there's a lot of acting matters, it's not unusual that we would put out an update at least once a week, just so members know what's going on.
All right. Under union actions, you've got the union has written to both the acting CEO and the mayor today, asking them to commit in writing to the union that there will be no job losses or redundancies?
Yes.
Did you receive a response from the acting CEO?
I'm sorry, I genuinely cannot remember.
Can you just excuse me? Do you recall whether you got a response from the mayor?
I personally have never received a response from them.
Right. I was going to suggest to you, and I'm just trying to find the document, there may have been some communication by the acting CEO that there wouldn't be any restructure until the council elections in the latter half of the year.
I'm not sure if this, that, that did happen, but I'm not sure if that happened now or if that happened a little bit later in the timeline.
All right. Now, also dealing with repercussions or further action taken in respect of the interview and the posting, did the union make a complaint or raise matters with the office of local government?
Yes.
Would document INQ dot zero four seven dot zero zero one dot zero zero six five be brought up? Yes, please. Looking at this document, have you seen this before?
Yes.
And I won't take you to the detail of it, but because it raises matters that you've been giving evidence about for the last hour or so. But in substance, is the union again raising the conduct of the mayor? And also, if you continue down the page, you can see that the union identifies the council's code, that being the code of conduct?
Yes.
And what the union sees to be breaches of that code?
Yes.
And did consistently with that, was a code of conduct complaint actually made to the acting CEO?
I believe so, yes.
Could document INQ dot zero four seven dot zero zero one dot zero zero six five? And this is now page three of that document. You've got page three up there. And if you look at that, it's a letter addressed to Mr. Breton, acting CEO. And they're writing pursuant to a particular clause of the code of conduct procedures to make a code of conduct complaint?
Yes.
Then if you, if we could bring up INQ dot zero forty four, oh, sorry, it's the same document, this time page five. I'm terribly sorry. This is the response by Mr. Breton?
Yes.
Refers to the code of conduct complaint. Then in the third paragraph says, in this regard, I refer to clause 4.8 and ask whether the complaint on these matters you wish to have it resolved by mediation or by any other alternative means and then requires a response?
Yes.
If we can go to page four of that document, this is a letter dated the 15th of May and it's the response by the union in which in substance they do not agree with the relevant complaint being resolved by mediation or alternative means?
Yes.
And actually refer to the shortly engaging in a conference facilitated, facilitated by the commission?
Yes.
Excuse me for a minute. Would you please bring up document LCC dot zero one zero dot zero zero one dot five three five six? Yes. This is a letter dated the 13th of June from the union to Mr. Breton?
Yes.
Referring to the code of conduct complaint. And you can see in the, the second paragraph there, we are seeking an update on the current status of this complaint?
Yes.
And then in the sub paragraphs, there's various questions which go to the procedure?
Yes.
If we just go through, and we would appreciate clarification of the above, by the 18th of June, would you then bring up document LCC dot zero zero one dot zero zero three dot zero four six eight? Yes, please. This is dated the 22nd of July?
Yes.
And I know it's not all the way up there, but it's a letter from Mr. Breton responding to that recent correspondence?
Yes.
And if we can continue down that page, you can see, he says, I've chosen to deal with your code of conduct complaint against the mayor by alternative means. In this regard, the mayor has apologised for the actions during the IRC conference. The mayor has already removed the social media posts and I have counselled the mayor via informal discussion. And as he then states, in accordance with the procedure, he now considers the matter finalized.
Yes.
So that was the end of result of the code of conduct complaint made by the union?
Yes.
There's just two other topics that I wanted to deal with. The union on behalf of its members can make inquiries of the council about particular roles within the staff at the council, which might have recently been creation?
Yes.
Did the council make an inquiry in May 2024 about the role of a senior advisor?
Yes.
Would document INQ dot zero four seven dot zero zero one dot zero zero four eight be brought up, please? Yes, please. And just looking at the beginning of this, the union seeking further details on the role of a, of senior advisor?
Yes.
And in particular, underneath the union is seeking certain documents. So the position description details on the grading and the salary range, a copy of the organisational chart, details of when it was added to the structure and when the role was last advertised and how it was advertised. Would you then bring up document INQ dot zero four seven dot zero zero one dot zero zero three four and it can be livestreamed? This is the letter in response to that inquiry dated the 20th of June, 2024. And if you look at, if we can bring up the rest of that, they attach the position description. They then identify that the position is graded a G15 band three level two and attach a salary band information. The position is located within City Futures Directorate. And then it was endorsed by the Joint Consolidative Committee on the 1st of February and it's currently a direct appointment on a temporary contract ending in September 2024. currently a direct appointment on a temporary contract ending in September twenty twenty four.
Yes.
Uh now pages two to five of that document, that's the position description?
Yes.
Then if we go through to page six? And is there any chance we can whiz page six round? Brilliant. Is that what was described in the letter from the council as the salary band information?
Yes.
Now, I think we've heard some evidence very early on. You've got the award which has different classifications. And then in conjunction with that, there's a salary structure or a salary system?
Yes.
And is this an um extract from the salary system that was in operation?
This is council's salary system.
Yes, and that's peculiar to Liverpool City Council?
Yes.
And where it refers to, uh I'm just reading from the council letter. Um graded a G fifteen, I take it G is grade?
Yes.
And so looking at this document, you go to the grade column and you go down to number fifteen?
Yes.
It then refers to band three. Is band three actually a reference to an award classification?
Yes, where it references bands and levels, that is the wording used in the award.
All right, but it also refers to level two. Does level two also have some relevance um for the next? In a sense, you've got level one, three columns?
Yes.
Then a thick black line and then you have level two?
Yes.
So is the reference to grade fifteen, level two, a reference to those two middle columns?
Yes.
All right, um which is annual salary fortnightly and then hourly?
Yes.
And then if um we could then go to page seven? This is officer, the director of City Futures proposed. And there's a direct report from the senior advisor um to the director of City Futures. Because it's headed proposed, was it your understanding that that actually wasn't in operation at the time?
Yes.
And where it's got senior advisor, market rate, what does the market rate refer to?
Market rate means a market premium paid on top of the salary system.
Right, um okay. Now. You've given evidence that you um looked after or you had coverage of the union members at the Liverpool City Council for about thirteen years.
Yes.
Um during that time, did you um deal with a number of CEOs?
Yes.
Uh when Mr. Ajaka's employment was terminated, there was a period where Mr. Britton was the acting CEO?
Yes.
And I think it was up until about April of this year when he was permanently appointed to that role?
Yes.
Can I ask you the relation, your relationship as an organizer of the union with Mr. Britain? Um after he was appointed the acting CEO, um how would you describe that relationship?
Strained?
Mm hmm. Um when you say strange, strange in what way?
Um we had come from Mr. Ajaka, who was a CEO, who was very open and consultative to Mr. Britain, who was not at all interested in consulting. Um spoke down to me, spoke down to my members and wouldn't engage with us or turn up at meetings unless there were senior union officials at the meeting.
Um. We've heard evidence that when Mr. Ajaka uh became the CEO, there were um give you a rough indication, maybe about forty six industrial grievance matters um that had come to, that were current?
That sounds about right, there were a lot.
Uh we also heard evidence that by the end of his employment with the council, that number had decreased considerably?
Yes.
And that, and again, this is just off the top of my head, there might have been about four or three or four outstanding at that time?
Yes.
After Mr. Ajaka's employment was terminated, was there an increase in the industrial grievances?
Yes, there was. There was an increase in grievances and dispute.
Um has that, and some of that increase, I take it reflected the matters that I've taken you to dealing with the social posts and the interview with Chris O'Keefe?
Yes.
Um if you can, putting that to one side, um have the number of industrial grievances or disputes um remained high?
To, until now?
Yes.
I'm no longer at Liverpool.
I'm sorry, until you left in May?
There, there were, there were less actual disputes in the commission um at the time that I left, but there was still a large number of grievances outstanding.
And I don't, when you say grievances outstanding, we've seen in the correspondence that the union will say, um this is a grievance and as you've given evidence, that invokes procedures within, under the award?
Yes.
So at that point, if it's a, if it's an industrial grievance, does that mean it's at the level where the union and the council are trying to resolve the matter?
So when the union writes the letter, even though we invoke the grievance procedure, that's not a grievance under the award. A grievance is written by an employee um and it is something that they give to their employer that sets out what they're aggrieved about and what their resolution was. So when I say there was a large number, I'm not referring to our letters, I'm referring to those grievances lodged by members.
All right, um so they're really at a level at that stage outside the commission?
Yes.
Uh and is it the case that if ultimately they can't be resolved, that may lead to some notification to the commission?
Yes.
Um and after Mr. Ajaka's employment was terminated, the grievances outside the commission increased in number?
Yes, but they were probably tied to matters that were already going to the commissions.
All right, so is it kind of a?
So around safety and?
Yeah. Or or artificial demarcation?
I'm not sure, but you mean by that, but um I guess when John was terminated, the number of disputes in the commission went up?
Yep.
And drastically, but if the grievances went up predominantly, they were related to matters that we were already dealing with in the commission.
Uh and up until, you spoke about the relationship being strained. Did the relationship improve over time? You've become less strained?
Marginally.
And when you left in May, um were the number of disputes or the number of grievances, were they still at a, at a increase or a high level or?
I would say the grievances were probably still at a high level. Um there were no outstanding matters with the commission though at the time that I left.
But what was with the commission had been finalized or resolved?
Yes.
And when I spoke previously about when Mr. Ajaka, we've had some evidence that when Mr. Ajaka became the CEO, the number of grievances was in the forties. Is your understanding of that, that it's the member grievances and not matters at the commission?
It was a mix.
It was a mix, okay. Um now, I've asked you, in a sense, about your experience with Mr. Britain as either the acting CEO or for a short period, the CEO. Um looking back pre- Mr. Ajaka and your experience with other CEOs, was it again a mixed bag from the union's perspective that um there might have been strained relationships or good relationships or?
It, it was mixed, but they were, they were more often productive than non-productive.
And when you say more productive than non-productive, what do you mean by that?
So if I, if I'd looked at the eleven previous CEOs, I would probably say that we had a good working relationship and including acting CEOs, that we had a good working relationship um with if there were eleven, maybe eight of them, and then there were three where the relationship was a little bit more rocky.
Um when you describe it as a good working relationship, in your mind, what do you mean by a good working relationship?
I mean, if we can't resolve something at the HR union level, that I can reach out to the general manager or CEO of the council and try and resolve it at that level.
So is that, in a sense, being able to approach the CEO if the matter can't be resolved um at management levels below the CEO?
Yes.
You could approach the CEO directly and try and resolve it through his or hers?
Yes.
Would you just excuse me? No further questions.
Good, um document INQ dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one zero nine nine be brought up, please? And this is the minutes of the meeting on the twenty fourth of April, and if we go through to page ten, please? This is the uh recording of the motion that was passed in closed session once the meeting resumed. And I just want to take you to paragraph two of the resolution and uh two A. The council resolved to investigate Liverpool City Council workplace health and safety concerns that are advised to be impacting the organisation culture, including issues raised and feedback provided by USU representatives with mayor and other councillors on Tuesday twenty three April twenty twenty four regarding safe, acceptable and appropriate workplace culture, do you see that? You have a meeting with the mayor and other councillors on the twenty fourth?
I do not recall having a meeting at all that week, it is possible we wrote to them.
But sitting here today, do you have an understanding of what that paragraph is referring to?
I, I know I didn't have a meeting, so um it's not unusual that we will write to councillors as a collective when we have concerns and I would have to check our files, but I would say that's most likely what we did.
All right, and are you aware of any investigation following the twenty third of April twenty twenty four into feedback raised by USU representatives regarding safe, acceptable and appropriate workplace culture?
I'm not.
I have no questions, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Miss, my name's Ms. Richardson, I'm here on behalf of Mayor Manoon. So gave evidence this morning to Ms. McDonald, councillor Sistine, that um Mr. Ajaka called you a few days before you met him on the Monday, the twenty second of April. I just want to remind you, in your interview with the um, I'll call them the section four thirty investigators, do you understand what I mean by that? In your interview with the um the four thirty investigators, you said that he rang you on the Friday before the Monday, does that sound correct to you?
That sounds correct.
Okay. Um and you told the four thirty investigators that Mr. Ajaka rang you and said he needed to have a meeting with you?
Yes.
Does that sound correct?
Yes.
That's what he said to you?
Yes.
Did he tell you on the phone on the Friday why he needed to have a meeting with you?
Not from my recollection.
Um and then you met with him in the, on, in the morning on the Monday, the twenty second of April?
Yes.
Um it must have been relatively early, was it? Because you went out for breakfast after that, is that right?
Early is relative, I've learned, so my day starts at five AM, but it was probably about eight.
So about eight AM?
Yeah.
But it was early enough that you could go and then have a working breakfast meeting with someone else?
Second breakfast, because I also ate donuts in his office, which is why I will never forget the meeting. They were very nice donuts.
They were nice donuts?
Very, enticing.
Um so if we just go to that meeting, it was about eight AM?
Yes.
How long did it go for, to your recollection?
Oh, probably up to an hour?
About an hour, okay, and it was just the two of you there?
Yes.
In his office?
Yes.
And he'd brought donuts to the meeting, had he?
They were in his office.
Right. And um had you met with him in his office before about the topics?
Yes.
And you've given evidence that he told you words uh to the effect that day that I think Ms. McDonald asked you to recall to the best you could the exact words that Ned, that Mr. Ajaka said to you, Ned has told me that I must get rid of a hundred and fifty jobs?
Yes.
Said that to you?
Words like that, yes, I do not remember the exact words.
Yeah, but he definitely said words to that effect to you?
Yes.
And he, you've also given evidence today that he gave, said to you that a hundred and fifty jobs of your members are at risk?
Yes.
I think you also gave evidence today that he said words to the effect that a hundred and fifty jobs of your members would be slashed, is that correct?
I think that when I was questioned, to be more exact, I think he said get rid of a hundred and fifty of my members' jobs, but I initially did use the word slash.
Thank you. And so in the way he expressed that to you, he said that the mayor had in effect given him a direction that he needed to get rid of a hundred and fifty union members' jobs, is that correct? Did Mr. Ajaka express that to you as rumour or gossip?
No.
Was, he expressed it to you as a direction that the mayor had given him, is that correct?
At the meeting they'd had the previous week where he had said, shut the F up.
It's the meeting my learned friends calling the swearing meeting?
Okay, yes.
Um and so based on what he told you, you you understood it was not just a rumour or conjecture that actually was a direction that the mayor had given Mr. Ajaka, correct? And you gave evidence in the four thirty investigation that um you had been concerned about breaking Mr. Ajaka's confidence and you were cut off in that interview, but you've said words to the effect of he's given that to us under something or other, I just wanted to explore that with you. So Mr. Ajaka told you that information about getting rid of a hundred and fifty jobs in that meeting you had on the twenty second? And did he also ask you to keep it confidential in that meeting that he was the source of that information?
No.
Well, um you agree with me, you told the four thirty investigators that you uh were concerned about breaking John's confidence if you revealed him to be the source of the information, correct? that you were concerned about breaking John's confidence if you revealed him to be the source of the information, correct?
Yes.
So what was the source of the fact that it was Mr Ajaka's confidence and you were not willing to reveal him as the source of the information? What was the basis?
I wasn't willing to reveal him as the source because he was a union member and I was worried that by me revealing that while he was still employed, that would put his job at greater risk.
Was that obvious to you that if you revealed Mr Ajaka as being the source of the information about getting rid of 150 jobs, that his job would be at risk?
I missed the very two words you said at the beginning, sorry.
Sorry. Was it obvious to you that if you revealed Mr Ajaka as being the source of the get rid of 150 jobs information, that his job would be at risk?
I don't know if obvious is the right word, but it was my feeling that it would be.
Isn't it obvious?
It was my feeling that if I revealed that, his job would be at further risk.
So you were proceeding on that basis, were you?
While he was employed, yes.
Whilst he was employed, you were proceeding on the basis that if you revealed that he was the source of the get rid of 150 jobs information? So is it the case that your evidence said he did not ask you in that meeting you had with him to keep it confidential that he was the source?
He did not.
But you just understood that that's what you needed to do while ever he was employed so as to not put his job at risk?
Yes.
Correct? And did you take that position because he was a union member?
Yes.
And you were seeking to protect him?
Yes.
So in the 430 interview, you remember that you and Mr Donnelly were interviewed together as part of that
Yes.
process. He had said, we got it on good faith that there was 150 people who were going to be terminated.
Mr Donnelly did?
Yes.
Yes.
So did you also take the position that when Mr Ajaka had told you that he had been directed to get rid of 150 jobs, that you could take that in good faith because it was coming from the CEO?
Yes.
And you took it in good faith that he was telling the truth?
Yes.
Was Mr Ajaka the only senior executive of the council who gave you information about 150 jobs being at risk? Was he the only one?
Yes.
So he was the sole instigator of that information, is that correct?
Yes.
And in the meeting you had with Mr Ajaka on the 22nd, gave evidence this morning that you got the sense that Mr Ajaka felt at this time that his job was at real risk, is that correct?
Yes.
And now I can take you to the 430 interview you did, but isn't it the case that the way Mr Ajaka described what had happened at the swearing meeting was that Mr Mayor Manoon had said to him, get your exact words from this morning? Mayor Manoon had said to him, you must get rid of 150 jobs. And that in the meeting, Mr Ajaka said, he'd said, in fact, no, I won't do that?
Yes.
So Mr Ajaka made clear to you that the mayor had given him that directive, but he was indicating he would refuse to obey it, correct?
Yes.
And it was in that context that after that, that Mr Ajaka recounted to you he had told Mr Manoon words to the effect of, sorry, I'll start again. Mr Ajaka said that he told the mayor, in effect, no, I won't obey that direction, correct?
I think the words he used were, we can't do that, I won't do that.
But he made it clear he would not be following that, correct? And then Mr Ajaka said that what the mayor had said in response was, you will do what I'm telling you to do, correct? Is that what Mr Ajaka relayed to you? I can take you to the transcript that would assist you.
Yeah, I mean, sorry, it was a year ago.
Just what you said in your transcript is that John had said, this is him recounting to you what's said. John said, I'm not sacking anyone. And then Ned said, no, you will do what I'm telling you to do. And then it was, well, shut the fuck up.
Yes.
That
That sounds about right.
That sounds about right. So that's what Mr Ajaka recounted to you as to what's happening in that swearing meeting in terms of the sequence of what happened.
Yes.
Ms Richardson, sorry, could I just have the page of the, just the internal page numbers fine if you don't have the doc I did?
Internal page 10 at about point two of the page.
Thank you.
So what Mr Ajaka told you as the sequence and the gist of what had happened at the swearing meeting was that the mayor had given him a direction that he must get rid of 150 jobs. And Mr Ajaka had made clear he would not be going through with that.
Yes.
And then Mr Ajaka recounted that the mayor said, you will do what I'm telling you to do. And then it culminated in Mr Ajaka as saying the shut the fuck up language, correct?
Yes.
And that was the sequence that he recounted to you. So was the gist of how Mr Ajaka was describing the swearing meeting to you was that it was the mayor who was dictating that there would be 150 job losses of union members? And that Mr Ajaka was standing up to that and saying, no, it can't happen?
Yes.
And it's also the case, isn't it, that at that meeting, you had the distinct sense that Mr Ajaka understood that his job was at real risk?
Yes.
Including by stand, as he recounted it, standing up to this direction of the mayor?
Yes.
So wasn't it the case that you came away from the meeting with the distinct impression that it was the mayor who was driving this proposal of 150 job losses of union members? That Mr Ajaka was seeking to block that and refusing to comply? And he was putting his own job on the line to stop that happening, correct?
I think his job was already on the line, but yes.
But you also understood that he was putting his job on the line by reason of his stance against the mayor on this issue, correct? And does that in part explain why the union came out so strongly in support of Mr Ajaka in terms of the moves in relation to Mr Ajaka at the meeting a few days later? As an understanding that he was putting his job on the line to protect union members?
What we came out in response to was that potentially we were going to lose 150 jobs at Liverpool Council. Our members felt very strongly about John Ajaka because he was a very good CEO, probably the best one they'd ever had. And so they wanted to stand there and fight for him.
You also yourself had a sense of injustice, didn't you? That you were very concerned about significant union job losses? And he was a person you thought was sticking up for union jobs and putting his own job on the line?
I have a sense of injustice about most things that happen in my life, but my primary concern
What about this one?
My primary concern was that 150 jobs.
Well, didn't it add to your sense of injustice that one of your members, Mr Ajaka, might lose his job over the stance he was taking?
150 jobs were my concern. Mr Ajaka was not the first CEO at Liverpool Council who was a member who lost their job.
Just listen to my question. He was a member?
Yes.
And you took other actions to protect him, correct?
I represented him in meetings, yes.
Right. Part of your sense of injustice was a sense, a concern that 150 union jobs were on the line from your understanding? And that one of those members, Mr Ajaka, his job was specifically on the line for standing up to that proposal? That was part of your sense of injustice, correct?
I understand what you're saying. I just want to not downplay that the greater sense, a very large sense of my concern was for the 150 jobs.
Sure, but Mr Ajaka was part of the picture, wasn't he? A sense of injustice about him?
I was concerned about Mr Ajaka losing his job, yes.
And so it's an email was sent by a USU advocate on the 22nd of April, we can bring that up, which describes the fact it suggests that there might be moves to sack Mr Ajaka at the council meeting in a few days' time. Might just have that brought up. Do you know who authors emails from usuadvocate@gmail.com?
No, I do not.
Is that an anonymous person?
That's synonymous to me.
All right. So you don't know, you're not party to who's drafting those emails?
No.
I can tell you that email, which is at lcc zero zero one dot zero zero three dot euro four six one underscore page five. That was an email on that same day, the 22nd of Monday at 1:55pm is already describing the fact that there would be moves to dismiss the CEO at the council meeting this coming Wednesday. So were you aware that there were already rumours on that Monday that there might be moves taken at the council meeting on the Wednesday to dismiss Mr Ajaka?
I was aware before Monday that his job was under threat. I think I've already mentioned that.
But you knew that on the Monday, didn't you?
Because of this email?
No, I'm just, I'm sorry, you generally, you knew after your meeting with Mr Ajaka in the morning?
I don't know if I knew. I think I could make a fair assessment on the information before me that it could happen.
Yes, thank you. So you gave evidence this morning that after your meeting with Ajaka, you then went and had a meeting with a union delegate who was employed by the council. Is that Mr Tanseriti?
We had breakfast.
Oh, sorry, Raphael Katanzeriti?
Yes, but it was breakfast, not a meeting.
Okay. But you discussed business things at the
Well, I was working while we were eating breakfast.
Okay. So that's Raphael Katanzeriti, who goes by, you call him Raf sometimes? And the breakfast was at Lily's in Preston, is that right?
Correct.
Now, you gave evidence that you saw Mayor Manoon meeting with some other councillors in a private room, but the door was open at that cafe?
Yes.
And it's a case, isn't it, that you knew at that point that the source of information 150 staff members would be sacked was Mr Ajaka, correct? And he was the sole source of that information?
Directed to me, yes.
Yeah. When you approached Mr Manoon and the other people, you agree with me, you didn't reveal to them that you had been told by Mr Ajaka?
No.
That he was subject of a direction to get rid of 150 jobs, correct?
No, I asked the mayor why he was getting rid of 150 jobs.
But do you agree with me, you didn't tell him the source of the information?
I did not.
And what I want to suggest to you is that when you approached Mr Manoon and the other people at the cafe, you started by saying words to the effect, I saw you hear Ned and I thought it would be rude not to come and say hello, do you?
I would have said Mr Mayor. I would not have called him by his first name.
But you said words, introductory words, that you thought it would be rude not to come and say hello?
Yes.
And then you said to him, John's our friend, we have his back. If you go after him, we'll go after you?
No.
And you recall that Mr Donnelly had said words to those of that effect to Mr, to Ray Hadley, that they were coming after Mr Manoon?
I'm aware of what was said on the radio, yes.
He said words to that effect?
I'd have to check the thing, but if you say that he said that in the transcript, then I will take your word for it, yeah.
And you heard that interview on the radio when it happened?
Yes.
I want to suggest to you that you also said words to similar effect to Mr Manoon, to say, John's our friend, we have his back. You go after him, we'll come after, we'll go after you.
I would like to suggest that if you ever had a conversation with myself and Mr Donnelly, you would very soon realise we speak very differently. And I would never have said that.
And that you said words in the conversation to Mr Manoon, you know, the staff have never had it as good as the last 12 months under John. And if the people that we know are coming in to replace him, come in to replace him, then we'll have the days of the propel again. I will make sure of it.
I did not say that.
And then you said words to him to effect, actually, you know what, I should have brought the trucks around if I knew you were here?
I did not say that.
You were aware that there were trucks that the union was deploying with billboards that were adverse to the mayor?
They weren't deployed by that day, no.
And that Mr Manoon said to you, you could do whatever you want, Sandy, but the fact remains that Mr Ajaka shouldn't have said to me what he said, or he should at least apologise?
No, what the mayor said to me was, did I condone the CEO telling him to shut the f up?
And that you responded by saying, you should have some thick skin by now, you just need to get over it. You said that to him?
I did not.
And that he said to you, if I didn't have thick skin, I wouldn't still be here, but here I am?
He did not.
And that you said to the mayor and the other people that John was clearly under stress and he acted out in the moment?
No.
And that Mr Mayor said to you, well, you said it, he is under stress, so he should take leave rather than act that way. We suggested that to him, but he didn't accept it. He won't even apologise. He said those words to you?
No, he did not.
And that you said, John losing it at a meeting does not make it a sackable offence, you know?
I did not say that.
And that he responded to you, who said he was getting the sack? Not us, we've never said anything about sack.
And he did not say that.
So and do you condone one of your members saying to the mayor of an organisation, shut the fuck up?
Do I condone it?
Yeah.
I wouldn't say it.
I'm asking you a different question. You're representing a member. You condone that type of behaviour?
Personally, no. But do I think that that is?
I'm not talking about you personally, you're a
I object. It was asked whether she would condone it. Her answer has been personally, I wouldn't. If there's some other aspect about her in her role as a union organiser, the question should be put on that basis.
I'll ask it on different bases. You're a You're a union organizer out at L C C at the time, correct? And in fact, you represented um Mr. Ajarka in his interview as part of the Weir Review with Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Um, so in your role um as a union organisation, uh organizer with knowledge of industrial relations, do you think it's appropriate for a C E O to say to a mayor of a council, shut the fuck up?
As I said, it would not be appropriate to me, but what I can also
No, just listen to my question.
No, I'm sorry, I'm jacked. She should be allowed to answer the question. If my friend considers at the end of the answer, it's not responsive, that can be raised. But in my submission, she should at least be allowed to complete the answer.
I think that's right. Finish your answer.
So when I started as a union organizer, I would never have said that any swearing in the workplace should be condoned. But sixteen years taught me that I was in the minority on that, so if someone else feels comfortable swearing in that environment, they feel comfortable swearing in that environment, I personally wouldn't.
But you're, but where you stand, it's not appropriate.
No, it wouldn't be appropriate.
Putting aside your personal view, given you're a union organizer representing the USU, do you say it's appropriate or not?
It's not up to me to judge whether that's appropriate. I personally would not do it. I don't know their relationship, I don't know their friendship, I don't know if the mayor ever swore back.
So after your um breakfast with Mr. Katanzeridi at a, in the morning of the twenty second of April, you then started um preparing flyers?
I would have been writing the flyer during the breakfast meeting.
Um, for the following day to have um an all-staff meeting in in relation to the hundred and fifty job loss two?
Yes.
Um and in those, in the flyer that you drafted, it said these meetings are urgent due to the potential threat to a large number of council jobs.
Yes.
And you were, you you were had in mind there that a hundred and fifty job losses that Mr. Ajarka had recounted to you, correct? Um and you described in the flyer that the meetings were urgent, you understood that something might happen at the the meeting on the Wednesday in respect of this issue, and that's why it was urgent?
It was urgent because a hundred and fifty jobs is urgent.
The fact that there was a meeting on the Wednesday made it more urgent, correct?
Yes, although, as I've already explained, the jobs wouldn't be lost on the Wednesday because there is a process.
But there might be decision making about that on the Wednesday, correct? And so did you uh participate in all of the mass meetings that happened um the following day on the twenty third of April?
Yes.
And did you or another union uh representative um reveal to council workers present that you had received information that there would be a hundred and fifty job losses?
I can't remember what I said, but it's likely I said that, yes.
The hundred and fifty
It's likely, yes.
Was very likely to be mentioned at every meet. So that um you or another union representative were repeating what without sourcing Mr. Ajarka, you were repeating what he had told you was the position of that job losses, correct? And that was the main issue being discussed at those meetings, was it?
Yes.
Is it fair to say that emotions were running high and people were extremely agitated about that prospect?
Yes.
And you, I think you've given evidence that you heard the radio interview that Mr. Donnelly had with um Ray Hadley in the morning of Tuesday, the twenty third of April?
Yes.
And he also repeated uh the information that had come from Mr. Ajarka about a hundred and fifty job losses?
Yes.
And to your understanding, he only got that information from you based on what Mr. Ajarka had told you, correct?
Correct.
Um. At the Ray Hadley Show, you'd be aware that that's a a radio show that's widely listened to by um union members and people in the Liverpool area?
The ratings would say so, I assume so.
And Ms. McDonald took you to information of um things that Mr. Hadley said after that interview, that the mayor had sent him various documents, including something to the effect of we wouldn't cut a hundred and fifty jobs, it's probably about eight positions, managers and so on, you recall that?
Yes.
Um, so as my learned friend put to you, that the mayor through Mr. Hadley was denying the hundred and fifty job loss proposition, correct?
Correct.
Is it the case that um you and other union delegates, to your knowledge, were working on the basis that you had received in good faith information from the C E O that there would be a hundred and fifty job losses?
Yes.
And so you were proceeding on the basis that that was a real threat facing facing your constituents, correct?
Yes.
And is part of the reason why you put so much faith on that information was that he was the C E O?
Part of it, but not entirely.
And also that if if anyone knew, he would know, presumably?
Yes.
Now, at the um so at the um all-staff meetings, there were four, four versions of them, some in person, some online on the Tuesday, correct?
Yes.
And you said the main topic that was discussed at those meetings was the hundred and fifty job losses?
Yes.
And um there's another matter that was discussed there was encouraging um union members to rally at the council meeting that would be held the next day?
That wasn't um encouraged at the first meeting, so the motion came from the first meeting. My job then is to then relay that the motions that come from an or, sorry, an early morning meeting to subsequent meetings during the day, that happens at every council, so I would have read out the motions that had been done at that meeting. If one had have been added at the second meeting, I would have then also read that out at the third. But from my recollection, the motions on the morning were just accepted at each meeting.
So that was a motion accepted at the first meeting?
Yes.
And so then that was put to all the later meetings and adopted, correct? So the gist of all of that is that members were being encouraged through resolutions to attend a rally um prior to the council meeting that would take place the next day?
I don't, I don't understand the term in which you're using encouraged. I just want to be clear that I didn't encourage them. If they encouraged each other because they passed a motion, then that's what happened.
Well, perhaps could we have the motion brought up, please? I don't have the I N Q number, I'm sorry. It was the motion from the six thirty meeting.
Is this the one that was recorded, you know, piece of correspondence?
It may. Um, might be, um, I N Q dot zero four seven dot zero zero one dot zero zero five four, we we think this is it. Okay. Yeah, I think it's a letter that memorializes the motion.
Yes.
Yeah. So, motion three, all USU members stop work at twelve thirty P M on Wednesday, the twenty fourth, to attend the one P M rally at Civic Place.
See that?
Yes, so that that was a resolution that was passed at each of the meetings on the twenty third?
Yes.
So it's the case, wasn't it? In effect, regardless of who was encouraging who, that there was a unanimous motion that every USU member attend um stop work and attend the rally the following day?
Yes.
And your understanding is that the thing that was motivating these motions was the hundred and fifty jobs loss issue, correct? It's the case, isn't it, that at no point did Mr. Ajarka say to you prior to the meeting on the twenty fourth, actually, I I made it up? The the idea that there's going to be a hundred and fifty job losses is wrong? Did he ever say anything?
He never said that to me.
Did he ever say, stop this, I've
No.
Started a hair running, it's false?
No.
So at all times during this process, you were working on the basis that Mr. Ajarka had told you the truth about the directive to get rid of a hundred and fifty jobs?
Yes.
And you gave evidence that prior to the rally, the night before, you'd had communications via Facebook or some other medium where you were uh brainstorming how to run the rally the following next, the following day?
Um, just about chants.
Chants. Was one of the chants you agreed was appropriate is, Ned's a nob, save our jobs?
Yes.
So in your view, that past muster in terms of not being too colourful?
Yes.
It's fine?
It's not too colourful, there's no swearing.
So is it the case that you were part of a group the night before that agreed that it was appropriate to have a chant at the rally the next day, saying, Ned's a nob? Save our jobs, were you part of the decision making that that was?
So my my job is to cull the ones that I um are just a little bit too colourful, and I did not cull that one.
And you did not what?
Cull that one.
So you did colour it because you felt it was appropriate, correct?
I didn't feel it was overly colourful.
Well.
It rhymes, it's catchy. It's easy to say.
Ms. Moreland, you gave evidence this morning that part of your role as the relevant union organizer was to, in effect, approve what chants were okay and agreed upon and what were too colourful, correct?
I'm not sure I used the word approved.
Well, part of it was that you would agree upon what chants were appropriate and what were not, correct?
Yeah, I removed ones that were inappropriate.
And as part of that is that you were expressing your agreement as to whether a chant's appropriate or not, correct?
Yes.
And so Ned's a nob, save our jobs, was among the chants that you agreed was an appropriate chant?
That was among the chan- the chants that I left on the list to be used at the rally.
Because you formed a view that are appropriate, correct?
I thought the the view that it wasn't too colourful.
Ms. Moreland, let's get real, you 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 thought that was an okay chant, correct?
It is an okay chant, it's catchy.
And Mr. Brandon Rhodes, he is a USU delegate who also works at the council, correct?
Correct.
And that he, um, because you don't like hearing your voice, so you don't want to be up the front, he agreed to be the person up the front with a loud hailer, correct?
Yes.
So he was the primary person representing the union at the rally?
He was leading the chants at the rally.
But he was the, he was the union person speaking on behalf of the union?
If there, if there was any speaking other than chants, it would have been done by myself. He was leading chants, and that's all we had at the rally.
So to the extent there was anything done by a union organizer at the rally, it was done by Mr. Rhodes?
No, because he's not a union organizer. He is a union delegate. He was leading chants. He did not set up the rally, he did not hand out the flags, he did not muster people, he led chants.
So um was he the only person that spoke out the front of the rally?
No, I believe I probably spoke a little bit, I would have spoken a little bit at the beginning about being appropriate. I would have spoken a little bit at the beginning about keeping it calm, because I do that at every rally. And I would have spoken at the end about calmly going inside and being respectful if you were going to go into the council chambers.
And um but Mr. Rhodes was the person who was leading the chants at the rally?
Yes.
And did you agree with that the night before through your Facebook group messages that he would be the person who would do that?
Agreed is the wrong word. I actually told him he had to do it, but yes.
So you told him he had to do it on behalf?
Lead the chant, that that's not unusual.
But that was sorted out the night before, that he would be doing that on behalf of the union the following day?
He would be leading the chants.
On behalf of the union the following day?
He would be leading, not on behalf of the union, he would be leading the chants at a meeting of members.
Well, he was there representing the union because you had told him that you wanted him to be up the front, leading the chants, correct?
He was leading the chants.
Well, he wasn't, he wasn't going rogue and doing it on his own behalf, was he?
No, he was requested to lead the chants. That doesn't necessarily mean that he was representing a union.
So you were the union organizer and you agreed the night before that you said to him, you will lead the chants tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
And um we have the um original footage of the chants at the um the meeting, the rally outside, but I want to suggest to you that um Mr. Rhodes repeated the phrase, or that someone in the um the rally audience had said the phrase first, is that your understanding that they, another person instigated it?
Yes.
And that Mr. Rhodes um repeated that phrase twice?
Okay, I, my recollection is once. Um, that's my recollection.
And you're aware that Mr. Rhodes has previously uh used the expression, put some pork on your fork? And that issue has been raised in the workplace, that he has used that phrase before?
I don't know if I'm aware that it was raised that he in particular had said it. I'm aware that it was raised that some members said it at a rally in twenty fifteen.
And that was a rally outside the Merrill Ball for disabled children?
Yes.
Um, I want to suggest to you that he was among the group um holding up a sign saying, put some fork on your fork, fork on your fork?
He wa- he was definitely at the rally, but what you asked was, um, had he been in trouble in the workplace before? Like, a a rally on a private venue on a Saturday night is not in the workplace.
I think what was put to you was that he had used the phrase previous. And I understood he had used it previously.
I'm not, I'm not sure that he's
And you can tell me where I go wrong?
Okay, sorry.
That you're, what was put, I understood to be put to you was that he had used the phrase previously and your response to that was you were aware that it had been used at a rally in twenty fifteen?
Yep.
But you weren't necessarily aware that of a suggestion that it was that individual, is that right?
That that's correct.
And you're aware that um there had been some history at the council of people using that phrase and that it was a phrase that was highly offensive to Mayor Manoon as a Muslim?
I'm aware that he would, I, he had never told me he was offended by it, but I'm aware he had used the word, it upset him. And that was in twenty fifteen.
Isn't it the case, Ms. Moreland, that this phrase had been used uh in, against Mr. Manoon a number of times, and it was well known that that was something that was highly offensive to him and upset him?
I'm aware that it was used in a non um union context more times. I can't recollect that it was used by union members more than that one rally.
I'm just asking you about your knowledge that that was a phrase that Mayor Manoon found deeply offensive. You knew that, didn't you?
And what I've said is, what I knew is that it upset him, because he had told me it had upset him.
Yeah, and it upset him because he found it quite offensive because he was a Muslim, correct?
He had never relayed that to me.
But he related to you that he found that upsetting?
Yes.
And I don't think we need to bring it up, but we brought, um, council assisting brought up for you for um when you gave evidence a Facebook posting of um part of the rally, and it had a still of a union member in the bottom left-hand corner holding a toy pick?
Yes.
What's the name of that person?
Um.
Sorry, the person holding?
Person holding the pick?
Yeah, I'm just trying, um, I think his name's David Taylor.
I think, could we have that um brought up, please? Was it the video, Kate?
M N M A
Yeah.
Dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero 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 eight?
Yes.
I think this is the video, but there's images superimposed over the top of it, is that the?
Yeah, there's a person in the bottom left-hand corner, it's a still.
We'll just have it brought up, and I think I think this is it. While that's happening, Ms. Richardson, I I think did I hear you correctly that you had, we have, or someone has the unedited or the the original, I should say, the original footage of this?
Yes, and we'll, we'll Yes, and we'll send that to the inquiry and have it uploaded with a proper?
Thank you.
Proper number. See the person in the bottom left-hand corner?
Yes.
Who is that person?
I believe his name is Dave Taylor.
And he's a union member?
Yes.
And do you agree with me that he was there on the day, holding a toy pig?
He was holding a number of toys and one was a pig, yes.
He was holding that pig there?
Yes.
You understood, didn't you, and you saw that that was designed to be offensive to the mayor, to bring a pig to that rally?
I actually didn't see him with the pig at the rally. I saw him upstairs in the foyer outside of the council chambers and he had, he had like, the silly hat he's wearing for number one, and he had like, two or three, I think it was three, but maybe I'm wrong, dog squeaky toys, one was a pig, one was a dog and one was some other animal. And I told him to put them away, not because they were offensive, because I thought he'd squeaked them during the council meeting and we'd get in trouble. They're like, um, dog squeaky toys.
And you were aware that people were chanting at the rally, Neds and Nob Save Our Jobs?
Yes.
And that there were other chants that were aimed at Mayor Manoon?
Yes.
And you're aware that, was it after this meeting that the union started to deploy a truck with a slogan saying, every breath you take, every move you make, we're watching you?
The trucks came out before this meeting, because one was at this meeting, at this rally. They have a number of signs that we changed during the period, I can't remember exactly when the eyes came, they were on the back of the truck, so the truck has two sides and then a smaller screen on the back, they were on the back. I'm not sure we had the eyes now or if they came later.
And were you part of the decision making to create a billboard on the back of a truck to that effect with the eyes on it and the, every step you take, we're watching you slogan?
Was, if you're saying, was I involved in the creation, yes, I'm not the decision maker who decides what goes on the truck, but we would have done up with our comms team a whole lot of artwork and then the managers of the union would decide which ones went on.
But you were part of that team that put that creative together, correct? And you agree with me that it had eyes, sort of foreboding eyes that hung over the top of the slogan?
They were eyes, I don't know if, I personally would.
Sort of dark coal or rings around the eyes so that they were, do you recall the artwork on them?
I just recall eyes.
Have you heard the evidence that Mayor Manoon's children found those billboards scary because they were seeing their father's name being mentioned?
And as soon as he.
Just wait for my quest.
Sorry, I thought you were.
With dark eyes saying, we're watching you. Do you accept that characterisation, that it's a scary billboard to have?
I accept that he said that.
You see that as valid feedback from him, that it's something scary for his children to have to see driving around the streets of Liverpool?
I accept that that's how he felt and we agreed the day he raised that to take the trucks out of Liverpool.
Now, you were interviewed as part of the, we're calling it the Weir investigation by Mr Harvey?
I wasn't interviewed, I was present at an interview.
You were there as a representative, correct? And you gave evidence this morning is that at the meeting on the 24th of April, that Mr Ajarka was, in effect, put on a type of special leave and there was a resolution about having an investigation into relevant circumstances, correct?
Yes.
And so you understood that when you came to be, to represent Mr Ajarka when he was being interviewed, that the focus of that interview was partly the swearing meeting and the circumstances of the swearing meeting, correct?
Yes.
And also the things that had happened after the swearing meeting, for example, the 150 job loss rumour and the union meetings culminating in the council meeting and the police, that that was all part of what the Weir investigation was looking at, correct?
Yes.
And you understood that a key aspect of what the Weir investigators were looking at was the source of the 150 job loss information, correct?
I don't actually recall if that was in the list of accusations or issues to be discussed that were given to John. But I wasn't surprised that it wasn't asked, I was not surprised it was asked, but I don't remember if it was actually part of the call brief for the investigation.
But I'll take you to it, you're aware that during the interview, that the interviewer repeatedly came back to that topic, Mr Ajarka? Now, it was apparent to you, wasn't it, that given the scope of the Weir investigation, that when you went along to be the representative of Mr Ajarka, that that might put you in a difficult position because you knew that he was the source of the 150 job loss information, correct?
Yes.
So you knew before you went into that interview that you were in a difficult position?
Yes.
Did you raise that with Mr Ajarka, that you were in a difficult position in terms of representing him because you knew the truth about the source of the 150 job loss proposal?
No.
Did you raise that with him?
Nope.
So you felt uncomfortable about it, but you didn't talk to him about it?
Correct.
You agree with me that someone else could have gone and been his union representative that day, given the difficult position you were in?
In theory, yes, but in practice, no, our team's not built like that, we don't have the manpower to do that, Liverpool is my job.
Liverpool what, sorry?
It's my job, so if something happens at Liverpool, it's my job.
So the date, I can tell you that the date that Mr Ajarka was interviewed by Mr Harvey and you were there as a union rep was the 22nd of May and you'll know from the dates that he had not yet been terminated, so he was still an employee at that point, correct?
I'm assuming that you're correct, so yes.
I'm telling you that, yeah, the dates are correct. So at that point, you were working on the basis that he was an employee and that his employment, in effect, might be saved depending on the outcome of the investigation, correct?
Correct.
And you were there seeking to protect him as a union member?
Yes.
So you understood that this was an independent investigation into these issues, that Mr Harvey and Weir were independent of council?
Yes.
So you understood there was a level of seriousness about the investigation because it had been directed to be conducted by an independent outsider?
To be perfectly honest, the majority of investigations at Liverpool council and like most big councils are done externally, it's not that unusual.
But it did have that level of formality, that it had been escalated to an outsider to engage in fact finding, correct?
Yes, but that was not special.
And just by way of interest, did you get a copy of the final report that Weir produced?
No.
And perhaps could we bring up this transcript, please? It's lcc dot zero zero eight dot zero zero one dot zero zero two two. So if we see there, the line just before the bottom of the screen where you say, yeah, I understand my role?
Yes.
So you said you understood your role, what was your understanding of your role there?
My role is to represent, but not to answer questions for the member.
So if I represent and given you understand your role is not to answer questions, do you mean that if you wanted to talk to them, you take a break and you go outside and give them some advice?
Sometimes we do this, sometimes I'll ask the investigator if they mind if I prompt or ask a question.
But you let the investigator take the lead, do you?
Yes.
So if we could just go to page 13, please? Sorry, sorry, ignore that. So, sorry, if we could go to page 21, please? And if we could see the paragraph saying, so it has upset me a little bit?
Yes.
I can tell you that's Mr Ajarka speaking. And it seems under that you say you're a USU member, not a delegate, so you're correcting the language being used by Mr Ajarka there?
Yes.
But if we just look in the paragraph starting, so it's upset me a little bit, that he seems to think I'm the one who went out there. You were hearing Mr Ajarka, in effect, express upset that he was being blamed for being the source of the 150 job proposition, correct?
Correct.
So you knew he was lying when he was giving that evidence?
Or had forgotten, but yes.
Well, you knew that evidence was incorrect?
Yes.
And this was about four weeks after you'd had that conversation with him, correct?
Yes.
And then if we could scroll down a bit, please? Mr Harvey says, could you just read that passage starting, yeah, I mean, do you see that?
Yes.
Let me know when you've read that.
Oh, I've finished, I've got it, I've read it.
So what Mr Harvey is doing here is, do you understand what he was dealing with here? Is he was specifically trying to get to the bottom of where the 150 came from, correct?
Yes.
So he calls it the causational link, which is, he says, you guys are having a meeting about potential cuts, I think we would interpret that that's the swearing meeting about some cuts of some sort. And suddenly there's a meeting with, indecipherable, with you, with the union, and then suddenly it's out there, there's this 150 cut. So you knew when you heard that, that in fact, Mr Harvey had hit the nail on the head, which was that there was a meeting with you, of the union on the 22nd, and suddenly it's out there, there's 150 out. Like, you knew he hit upon the exactly correct thesis, correct?
Yes.
And then he says, so the causational link is in my head, or I think it's been the upsetting part, because then that led to what happened in the meeting, et cetera. So he's trying to get to the causational link, which is, he seems to know that there was some type of meeting between you and Ajarka. Suddenly, 150 is immediately out there in the public domain. And then we have a council meeting that has been, I think you would agree, a very contentious meeting, correct?
Correct.
With a rally and so on. So you agree with me that when you heard that evidence, you understood that Mr Harvey was exactly correct in terms of identifying the causational link?
Yes.
And then you heard Mr Ajarka give the evidence, which is at the bottom of the page, so at no time did I ring the USU to tell them what had happened, they rang me. You heard him say that?
I don't, but I don't recall it, but obviously he did. I accept that he did, yeah.
And you agree with me, when you heard that, you must have thought, well, that's not correct?
Potentially. Well, I mean, I don't know if I was even thinking what I was thinking, but it stands to reason that I would think that that was not the truth.
Well, Ms Morethan, you'd given evidence that before you went into this meeting, you knew you were in an awkward position? Because one of the things that would be explored was the source of the 150 job loss information and you knew that it was John Ajarka, correct? And you knew that that had in effect been concealed to date?
Correct.
So that, isn't it the case that when you heard Mr Ajarka saying, in effect, that he didn't contact the union, that you contacted him, you knew that was wrong?
I can't recall what I thought, but I'm saying to you that, yes, I can see that that is wrong now.
Yeah, and you must have thought it at the time.
Reasonably thinking, but.
Because it was wrong, wasn't it?
It was wrong.
And in fact, you hadn't rung him at all to instigate this, he had rung you on the Friday and said, I need a meeting with you, correct?
Correct.
And then if we go over the page, please, you hear Mr Ajarka accounting. When I asked them, how do you even know about this? That's when they said to me the email and I said, what email, and so on. And then the next paragraph starts, so at no time have, have, it must be a spelling mistake, have I ever said the 150? The USU came up with that. So your evidence is that that's false, the USU did not come up with that number, correct?
The USU did not create that number.
Mr Ajarka created that number, didn't he?
Mr Ajarka told me that number.
That's right. And so when you heard him giving that evidence to Mr Weir, you knew that was not correct?
Yes.
In fact, you knew it was false?
Yes.
And you knew that Mr Ajarka knew it was false because he was the one who told you, correct?
Yes.
And then if we go down to the next paragraph, which starts, so I've never mentioned the 150? You see that?
Oh, sorry, the second paragraph or the third?
Sorry, it's the second full paragraph that starts, so I never mentioned the 150, you see that?
Yes.
So when you heard that, you knew that was false evidence he was giving to Mr Harvey?
Yes.
And he said, as I said, I never spoke to anyone. You also knew that was false because he had, in fact, told you in a meeting that he had called with you for that express purpose, correct?
Correct.
And then in the middle of that paragraph, he says, so at no time have I ever said 150, that's the USU. Do you see that?
Yes.
I shouldn't be dragged into that and I shouldn't be blamed for that anymore and so on, you see that?
Yes.
So when you heard that, you also knew that that was false evidence he was giving to Mr Harvey?
Yes.
So he was seeking to, in effect, lay it at your feet or the USU feet and put people off the scent that it was him?
Yes.
At this point, did you think, I need an adjournment? Because I'm a witness of fact on this and I know he's giving false evidence to an independent investigator?
No.
You didn't think that?
Not from my recollection.
Well, but we can see from the transcript, you didn't seek an adjournment to have a sidebar with Mr Ajarka saying, what are you doing, giving false evidence to Mr Harvey?
That's correct, I did not.
And if we go, move down a bit on that page, we see Mr Harvey saying, so again, part of my understanding of what he was reflecting back to me, I think we interpolate here of what the the mayor was reflecting to Mr Harvey, is looking at causational. You see that? Look, it's not very clear. Um you, you see that? Look, it's not very clear, the transcript. But do you agree with me that Mr. Harvey put came back to this topic a number of times, what's the causational link of where did this one fifty come from?
I agree.
And that if Mr. Harvey relied on the false evidence that Mr. Ajaka gave him, that he was not the source of the one fifty, Mr. Harvey would be misled?
Yes.
And that if that was then um put into the Weir report that Mr. Harvey compiled, that that report would be incorrect and misleading as to the correct position, correct?
If that was put into a report, yes.
Mm hmm. And and then if we go down to the um were, were you concerned that someone you were representing was giving um false evidence to an independent investigator that you knew to be false?
I'm sorry, I'm just thinking of my answer because I want to be honest with you. I I would think that I was probably angry that it appeared that we were being thrown under the bus and by way more me, I would like to say. It's probably normal that there's sometimes what's said to an investigator might not be exactly what happened. So I don't think this is the only time I've ever sat through a meeting like that.
Isn't it the case that sometimes as a representative, we've all been representatives, that sometimes someone's giving evidence in anything that doesn't really have the ring of truth about it, but you don't really know one way or the other, correct?
Correct.
And it's a matter for them whether they're telling the truth or not?
Correct.
Do you agree with me that you're in a different position because you knew the evidence he was giving was false?
A hundred percent.
That you were in quite a different position?
Yeah, and I regret, as I said this morning, I regret that it happened that way, but I can't go back and change it now.
And um down the bottom of that page, um then we see so firstly, um just before that, Mr. Harvey says, you see down the bottom, um yeah, just while this inaudible, but the other side was around about not very clear, why didn't you can communicate strongly to staff and to others that there is no such number as one fifty? That's one part of this, of his, I guess, feelings. I picked up from him that that was one of his strong feelings. So you understood that to mean part of the mayor's strong feelings was why didn't Mr. Ajaka um strongly communicate to staff that there's no such number as one fifty, that's what, that was the gist of what Mr. Harvey was saying?
I think we can infer that.
And you knew the clear reason why Mr. Ajaka wouldn't communicate staff to that effect because he was the source, he was the source of the false rumor, correct?
Oh, I don't know if that's why he wouldn't communicate, but I, I do agree that he was the source of the information.
That's right, I mean, you agree with me as a matter of practicality, he's unlikely to correct it when he's, he's the one that set the hair running, correct?
I, I'd have to ask him, I don't know, sorry.
And then you then um become involved, we see down the bottom, do you mind if I say something?
Mm hmm.
Um and then you say, as someone who was intimately involved in this, um we started talking about the hundred and fifty jobs on Monday by Wednesday, two o'clock. He was stood downright, so he literally had less than forty eight hours in which to make a statement.
Correct.
Um so you were seeking to defend your union member about his conduct in not issuing a public communication to disavow the rumor, correct?
Yes.
And um so then if we go down to the middle of the page, please, the page um twenty three. So we see in the middle of the page, Mr. Ajaka is saying, so again, by the time it got to the stage where the one fifty went out, it was literally less than a day in real time for me, you see that?
Yes.
And then Mr. Harvey says, so I'm just to clarify with the one fifty then, that was something that the union, you were saying, sorry, and I could bring you into this because you were mentioned, but that was discussed, who brought that figure up? So do you understand at that point that the interview has in effect changed character? And you're no longer there as in effect a mute representative or just uh you understood that your, I'll start again. You understood at the outset that your role was to not answer questions, correct?
On behalf of my member, yes.
That's right, but now you're actually becoming a witness of fact in the interview, that the character of the interview has changed, correct?
Well, I
you're not playing a role of representative here, you're actually giving primary evidence of facts to the investigator.
Well, I think that's how it turned out.
Yep.
But that's not necessarily how I saw it at the time.
Well, you weren't actually answering questions on behalf of Mr. Ajaka, you were saying, or in effect, I've got something to say on this topic because I was there, correct?
In hindsight, I can see that that's what it was, but what I'm saying is at the time, that's not how I viewed it. At the time, I was still feeling that I was representing him.
But it's the case, isn't it, we saw at the bottom of the previous page that the questions and answers were going to and fro between Mr. Harvey and Mr. Ajaka and then you said, do you mind if I say something?
Yes.
And you said that you in effect saying something because I'm someone who was intimately involved?
Yes, but I was saying it in defence of him, like to um assist his answer.
So you were seeking to defend your member by getting involved in the interview, correct?
Yes.
And so you then say, Mr. Harvey then asked the question of you, who brought that figure up, the one fifty up? And you recall, he's already had a series of questions about the causational link and he's trying to get to the bottom of the source of the one fifty number, correct? And he puts that question directly to you?
I don't know if, from memory, if he put the question directly to me, but I can see that he put the question and I answered it.
And so you then said, yeah, but we're being very firm that we'll only discuss that when we're in court, but I can tell you that person's not in this room?
Yes.
So do you agree with me that the evidence that you gave to the investigator that the person's not in this room was false?
As agreed this morning, I do.
And so then Mr. Harvey responds, so that's probably what I need to confirm. I don't need to know the major details involved, but if that person isn't John, then that's what I need to know. And so isn't it the case that you understood then that the that the issue of who was the source of the one fifty was a matter of some significance to Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And he was in effect saying, well, you have told me, Ms. Moreton, that it's not Ajaka and that's what I need to know?
Yes.
And wasn't it apparent then that Mr. Weir would put some uh emphasis or uh import, he would believe you in the evidence you gave that it wasn't John Ajaka?
Yes.
And that you then knew that you had given evidence on a false matter to Mr. Harvey and it was a matter about which he was going to place reliance?
And I, I can see that now, I don't know if that was my thought process.
But isn't it obvious when he says, in effect, I don't need to know anymore, I just need to know whether it's John Ajaka?
It's obviously, it's obvious twelve months later, reading the transcript, I don't know if in that moment that was my thought.
Well, just have a look at the transcript, isn't it the case that there had been a significant number of questions about the source of the one hundred and fifty number? And you actually um changed the character of this interview and started actually giving evidence of primary facts, correct?
Yes.
Because you were seeking to defend Mr. Ajaka?
Yes.
And you understood that if he was identified as the source of the one fifty job loss proposition, that his rob, job would be at risk?
Yes.
And you were prepared to give false uh evidence to Mr. Harvey in order to protect your union member, Mr. Ajaka, correct?
Yes.
I know at the time, I'm, I'm not.
Inquiries being?
I've made inquiries
Yes.
of the witness and she is available tomorrow morning.
Okay. Is nine, is ten o'clock sufficient or should we?
No, I think ten would be fine.
All right, we'll resume at ten AM if you wouldn't mind being back here shortly before then, I'd be most grateful. Thank you for your attendance and your assistance so far, you're free to go for today. We'll see you tomorrow, is there anything to do this afternoon? All right, thank you everybody, I'll adjourn until ten AM tomorrow.